Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this city council study session for June the 19th. It's a little after 2 o'clock. I see that we have our council present. I'm not seeing on the screen, Councilmember Whitaker. Mr. Brady, do we know, is he not going to be in attendance today?
I will. I don't, I just assumed he was. We contacted everybody, I believe.
Okay, I'm sorry, there we go.
Here he comes, here he comes.
Yes, all right. Welcome. Okay, our entire council is present. We have only one item on our agenda today, that is to discuss mitigating the spread of COVID-19 by requiring the wearing of face coverings in public places. As we all know, a couple of days ago on Wednesday, Governor Ducey held a press conference where he reviewed where we're at as a state when it comes to the progress of the COVID-19 infection. It was a very sobering presentation. I think we all know that Arizona has been on national headlines for the last couple of weeks as the pandemic has become more and more prevalent in our city and in our state. Also on Wednesday, Governor Ducey made a very compelling case for wearing of masks. And we also heard from the state health director where there was, there was no ambiguity in the recommendations and the evidence that was presented for the positive effects of wearing masks. And Governor Ducey authorized cities to adopt mask requirements. That was Wednesday. Since Wednesday, we've had a steady and dramatic increase in the number of cases in our state, going from record highs of 1,800 to 2,400 to today 3,200 cases. And I heard that today, the test rate for cases is over 26% of those being tested. So again, a very compelling situation. A few months ago, when we shut our city down, the likelihood of contracting the virus is much smaller than it is today. So the compelling question that we have as a community is what are we going to do to respond to this growing problem in our community? As I think has been, everyone's aware of, I'm in favor of issuing a proclamation consistent with what many of our surrounding communities have done, mandating to some extent, and in some situations, the use of a mask. I think it is, or a face covering is a better way to say that. I think it's important that we strive, if we're going to do this, for regional consistency, so as to make it not as non-confusing as we can to the public, particularly those that, you know, pop across borders multiple times a day. We've, so thankfully, we can look at the models and at the language that many of our surrounding communities have already adopted, including Gilbert and Tempe and Scottsdale and Phoenix, Tucson, several cities on the west side. I know the Chandler mayor has announced he's issuing a proclamation today as well. So I think it's important that we want, if we proceed, that we want this proclamation, again, to be consistent with our neighbors. But at the same time, I wouldn't suggest that we just, you know, white out Tempe's name and insert Mesa and call it good. I think we need to be thoughtful about this and we need to do this, we need to tailor it in ways so that it is specific to reflect the priorities of our council and of our community. So that's the purpose of our meeting today is to have that conversation and to talk about what we want this proclamation to look like. So I'm anxious to hear from the council. Mr. Smith is available. I've spoken with Mr. Smith a few times in preparation for this meeting to talk about what the proclamations in other cities look like, what are the issues that we need to resolve to go forward. And so with your permission, I can just kind of start down that list of questions that I think that I'm, that we're anxious to get your input on so that we can begin finalizing a document. My hope is that the proclamation can be drafted very quickly and whether it's ready today or over the weekend, I would suggest that the effective date should be Monday, just so as to allow members of our community some time to prepare and to educate themselves on what the requirements might be. So council, I can just start going through my list of items that I'm anxious to get feedback on. Does that sound okay to you? Okay, thank you. First, I would suggest that the emphasis, that the primary purpose for this is to regulate the inside of public places of business. And I'm thinking particularly the kind of the classic example would be a grocery store. This is a place where social distancing is really difficult, if not impossible. I would include, along with that, other facilities, businesses and public facilities, like our own city facilities, public transportation. The city of Phoenix and others have already taken, realized that public transportation is a classic place where the spread of the virus needs to be regulated. When it comes to outside activities, I think we need to be a little more lenient. But on, but at the same time, when you have groups of people that are not members of the same household, I think masking is appropriate in some situations in that context. I think it is important that we do have some exclusions from regulation. That would be, in my mind, individuals that have a medical issue where they feel like, you know, their health could be compromised if they were forced to wear a mask. Also, folks with mental challenges or developmental disabilities. In particular, I've seen some discussion from, for example, parents of autistic children that have described how they think it would be difficult or impossible for them to comply with this type of a requirement. And there are specific CDC guidelines that identify groups of people that the CDC feels like it would not be appropriate to mandate masks for. And the bar and restaurant environment, obviously, without trying to make a joke, I mean, you can't eat and drink with a mask. So how do you, how is this applicable in that situation? I would suggest that there is an exclusion, of course, for eating and drinking while you're in an establishment like that. But as you wait in line, as you, you know, congregate in areas where you are in close proximity with other people, that you have your mask on, and then when you're, when you're ready to eat or drink, feel free to take it off. There are some other places where we traditionally have not regulated. For example, schools. We do have elected school boards that are very capable and are, do a wonderful job setting policies for schools. And I, and I think we as a, as a council have traditionally avoided trying to regulate, you know, or go over the head of school boards. And frankly, that, some of the folks that I've talked to describe how terribly difficult it would be to try to figure out a good way to have a mask policy for a first grader or a third grader. I mean, I don't think, with the exception of Mr. Luna, who's a professional educator, I don't, I don't, I have no clue, you know, as to how to best tackle that situation. So I don't want to pretend that I do. So I, I would like to err on the side of being very deferential to schools to set, to implement policies for masking that is appropriate for that setting. And I think they could do that more effectively than we could. Traditionally, also, we have not regulated churches. Governor Ducey's order specifically identifies churches as necessary and essential and excluded from regulation. I had struggled with that a little bit because as I think of church gatherings, to me, it seems like a classic place where the spread of the virus could occur. So before we end today, I want to hear from Mr. Smith as to whether or not, but well, I want to hear the council's opinion on whether or not we should regulate church activity, and I want to hear Mr. Smith's opinion on whether or not we can regulate church activity. I'm sorry, I'm almost done, so I'll just keep you on through my list if that's all right. Obviously, there's some other just clear common sense situations where requiring a mask would not make sense when you're involved in medical or dental procedures or while swimming. Doesn't make any sense. Outside exercise, I think it's, I noticed something just in my personal situation when I, during the first part of this pandemic, I became a little bit of a recluse and I didn't exercise and it took a toll on my mental health. So I think it is important for us to encourage and make allowances for people to exercise. And even though it's hot, when you get up early and go outside, it's quite pleasant. And I want, I don't want to interfere with people's ability to exercise outside. And I think that can be done with social distancing. If you're with members, people who are not a member of your household, but you can maintain social distancing, I think we ought not to require a mask. I have read some articles over the last few days that talks about the problems of wearing a mask while you exercise. It elevates your respiratory rate, it elevates your heart rate. And, you know, there's some suggestion that it's just not a good, not healthy to wear a mask while you're involved in vigorous exercise. So but on the other hand, health clubs, I think, again, are notorious places for the spread of the virus. So I would think that we need to have something in place where when you enter the health club, you wear it while you're standing in line, while you're in a situation where you're interacting in close proximity with other people, you wear a mask. When you're actually exercising, when you're on the treadmill, if there's social distancing or if you're, if you can insulate yourself from other people, I think it might be okay to take the mask down so as to not, you know, create a health challenge for yourself. And with regard to workplaces, if you have a public, public place, if you're interacting with the public and dealing with customers, both the customers and the business people, I think, need to be wearing masks. And however, when you're alone or you can be socially distant, you know, when you're working in the warehouse or you're an auto mechanic or in other situations similar to that, where you're not interacting with the public or forced to be in close proximity with your coworkers, I think we need to have allowances to not have the mask on in those situations. Again, I'm almost done, I apologize. Vehicles. If you're in a vehicle with somebody who's not a member of your household and they're, you're in close proximity, that could be a problem. On the other hand, I kind of like the idea of just saying we're going to exclude vehicles and leave it to people's common sense to decide if they, if they feel like they're at risk when they're in their vehicle or not. Certainly when they're alone or when with their members of their household, it doesn't make sense to me to mandate a mask. We also, then looking at some of the other cities' orders, there's exclusions in there for public safety workers. And I would suggest that we ought to do the same thing. I mean, I think police and fire chiefs will probably tell their troops that there are times where it's appropriate to wear a mask, but there's probably also times where requiring a mask might interfere with their ability to do their job. The masks, I've heard some folks complain that, well, hey, masks are expensive. Is the city going to buy me a mask if you're going to require me to have a mask? I think we need to be generous in our definition of what a face covering is. It would include scarves and bandanas and other inexpensive, you know, alternatives to something, you know, some of the masks that we see that are expensive. Another question that I'm anxious to get the council's advice on is, and consensus on is, this order ought to expire. Should it just be left in place until we take action to turn it off? Or should it be, have a 30-day trigger on it so that would require us to reevaluate at the end of a certain period of time, whether, you know, the health situations in the community still require it? I'm anxious to get other people's thought on that. And then finally, with regard to enforcement, I think many people are intimidated and feel offended to some extent that the government would, you know, step into their lives to this extent to mandate a mask. And, and I, so I think we need to have a very soft touch when it comes to enforcement. I think the emphasis needs to be on education. It needs to be on helping people understand the health risks. And I think it needs to be very difficult for someone to receive a citation for this. Because on the other hand, if we make it impossible for someone to be cited, there will, we might as well not have the ordinance because people will possibly just ignore it and we won't get this desired outcome. So my preference is that it's, again, we have a soft touch, that we kind of mimic Governor Ducey's enforcement attitudes and policies over the last couple of months. And while it clearly is the law, we do everything we can to educate and to persuade rather than lead with some sort of punitive enforcement. So thank you for allowing me to take a minute or two to go through. I'm not suggesting those are all of the issues that we ought to address, but those are some of the issues that, and looking at what other communities have done, I think it's anxious, I'm anxious to get the council's thoughts on. Would anyone like to begin? Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, I'm going to take a stab at this. And I thank you for calling a special meeting. I'd like to ask the question at the end of our discussion, are we going to make a motion and then a second, then vote on if there is any proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I apologize. I probably should have led with that. Mr., trying to get my dog. Mr. Smith and I have talked about, you know, the proper device here. And maybe I'll defer to Mr. Smith to talk about the legal situation where we have an emergency declaration in place. And the question is, what's the, how, what's the legal process to go about expanding or contracting that, that declaration of an emergency and some of these elevated powers? As you know, under a normal situation, if we were adopting an ordinance, that's, there's, there's time requirements in that. And that's not really the scenario we're in right now. Mr. Smith, can, do you mind responding to Mr. Freeman's question?
Yeah, no problem, Mayor and Vice Mayor Mayor. Under state statute, after the emergency declaration, the mayor governs through proclamation. And so it's not an act of the council. Ultimately, the decision is of the mayors and a signature is of the mayors. And this would just be the next proclamation in the series, proclamations that were previously ordered. And so that's why it was adjourned, I said, as a discussion for council to discuss and be able to provide information to the mayor so that he could make ultimately the decision that is ultimately his decision. So to answer your question, it's not intended to be a vote at the end of this meeting.
But Mark, I can, if you don't mind, I am anxious for this proclamation to reflect the consensus of the council. I'm not, so that's the purpose of this meeting. There have been other cities that are a day or two ahead of us because the mayor acted unilaterally and not inappropriately so. But, but that's the purpose of this meeting is to get the council's input for this proclamation.
So thank you, Mayor, for that. I, this has been really a very dynamic time and with the COVID and everything. And then as I have been in public safety for a number of years and having responded to thousands and thousands of medical calls, with protection, without protection, I understand how, you know, the basic disease transmission happens. And I'm all for protecting our residents and our community. I think it comes down to probably regulation, mandates, government, is the government overreaching its authority? And, and as I struggle with the decision-making, how do we balance an even playing field for everybody in the community? I feel as an, as an adult, as the father and grandfather, that I can teach and educate my family how to prevent the spread of a disease. It's extremely important. And then part of me says, as a, as a governing agency, I shouldn't have to babysit, I'm sorry to use that word, members in my community because they have their free agency and they are able to make decisions for themselves. And is this government overreach? Well, I, again, this is a balance that we all have to direct our thoughts. And so as I've, as I've looked at the other, and I'm just putting it out here for council, you've asked for council discussion. I just personally feel a simple statement, talking about education, the importance of keeping a mask in your pocket, social distancing, doing all the things that we do today. Ironically, I'm in the age group that is a high-risk category. I know other members on the council have underlying medical conditions. And so therefore, we all take precautions in our daily life. Myself, as a farmer, I cannot wear a mask. I'm sorry. It's too hot out in where I'm at. And then my workforce, it's hot. It's 106 degrees. With that said, I just think that, again, a similar statement with bullet points. I don't want my personal, I don't want any police enforcement. I feel that that is not necessary. If we have a restaurant that's not complying with health conditions, we have a county health department with that. I do support a timestamp or duration on a proclamation and that the proclamation, if so said or how it's put together, should have bullet points. And I don't want to regulate a business. Personally, I think the businesses can self-regulate themselves. It's, and I'll use an example, we're all familiar, Costco requires masks, Sam's Club does not. Now, they have different methods of mitigating their customers. And I hope I'm correct on my information. I don't get emailed that you're wrong. But these are just some of my thoughts. It's just, again, a simple statement. So I'm going to end with that and I'll listen to my colleagues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Freeman. You know, I, I struggle because, you know, and I said this a long time ago, that, that the two areas that government doesn't belong is in the bedroom and in the boardroom. And so I don't think we should be mandating and regulating business. I think it's up to the business owners themselves to determine if they want their patrons to wear masks. I think we need to make sure that we're treating our citizens with the decency and common sense of believing that they can take personal responsibility for themselves. They're adults. I, you know, I'm not for mandating masks. I haven't worn a mask yet, except when it's required, eh, by my doctor. When I go to visit my doctor, I have to wear it. And when I'm around my elderly mother, I wear my, my mask just for her protection. So, you know, I, again, I think it's, it's up to, I think, the individual citizens whether they want to wear the mask or not. Mayor, I think you had some really thought-out, great points that you brought up. But I just, I just, as a government, I don't want to start mandating that our citizens have to do things. I think it's too intrusive. Again, I'm, I agree with Councilmember Freeman. I think an educational opportunity is out there. Continue to remind people to wash their hands, keep social distancing. You know, keep that mask in your pocket so that when social distancing can't be adhered to, that you, you can put a mask on or that you should put a mask on. But I, I don't think we should be mandating as a government.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor, for convening this meeting. I think it's a very important meeting. I appreciate you doing this. Of course, I do support the notion of sending this declaration, this announcement to our community. I think it's important. I think what we need to do is make sure that we define what they are. So instead of calling them masks, I would call them face coverings. I think that's less polarizing than masks. I think they're inherent, that word is government encroachment. So why don't we just call it, define it face coverings? I think that would be a little bit more consistent. I think also we should call it social, I mean, physical distancing as opposed to social distancing. I think that's probably the best thing. When we're talking about six-year-olds or older, present in the city of Mesa, shall wear a mask face covering, we should align ourselves to Arizona Department of Health Public Health Face Covering Guidance, which was issued in May 21st of this year. When they leave their home, base of residence, they shall wear a face covering whenever they are six feet from another person who is not a member of the family or household. I also, it should be worn in a city-owned building, facilities, place of businesses, motor transportation, bus and light rails and indoor, outdoor places where they're not able to maintain six feet of social distancing. So I am supportive of it. I think it's a good idea that we do do that. The other thing I want to make sure is that we continue to have our public safety employees and emergency responder. They need to make sure that they wear face masks, especially when they're engaged in essential businesses. They need to wear, I'm sorry, face coverings. And so it does not limit their ability to carry out their duties and function. And certain, and, you know, the governor, Governor Ducey, in terms of their business requirement per state executive order 2020-40, stay healthy, return smarter, return smarter, provides some essential guidance. I think those guidelines are fine. I think we should go ahead and incorporate those. I think education is key. I think one of the things that businesses might do in the city of Mesa, just like when you go to Target, it says right there right in front. If you're, if you're feeling sick, don't come in the store. Wear a face covering to ensure that you're not spreading any, the potential of the COVID virus to any of the patrons and, and any of our employees. Require all employees to wear a face mask. It's just concerning to me when you, if you go somewhere and employee of a business, of an establishment, isn't wearing a face covering, they could carry the COVID virus. And, you know, it would be great if everyone had that personal responsibility to ensure that they're wearing a face mask, a face covering. So certainly, we'd like to do that, but not everybody's going to wear that. I think that screening symptoms, especially according to the city of Mesa, our employees should be screened and asked, do you have a fever? And they should be required to wear a face mask. I think all employees need to be screened for those kinds of symptoms. And if you're sick, we've got to encourage them to stay home. Don't go to work. Make sure that we work with a six-foot physical distancing. We want to make sure that we continue to insist that they implement sanitation protocols. They've got to wash their hands and they've got to disinfect areas. Now, I think as far as enforcement, the first thing we need to do is educate our community. Post signage, public notices and social media. I think that's the first thing we need to do. And if somebody's not complying, is given the information they need, they can take with them, we can hand to them, please adhere to what we're recommending from the city of Mesa. And so certainly verbal warning and even to the potential, to the extent, if it's still a citation. So I'm, I think we need to err, err in the side of caution. I think that's essential as we move forward. And this now is for, as far as a timestamp. Let's wait till the Arizona Public Health determines that for the city of Mesa before we decide to go to determining that we're going to limit it to 30 days or 60 days. Let them provide the guidance we need. Certainly, we want to flatten the curve, but right now, our numbers are spiking. They are not going down. So we need to make sure that we're protecting our public. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Other councilmembers, yes, Frankie, Mr. Reddya?
No, thank you. You know, I echo some of the thoughts that Councilwoman Luna and you, Mayor, at the beginning of the meeting, as far as how do we, you know, we're in unprecedented times. We don't, we don't truly understand this, this, this virus. And, you know, every day, every week it goes by, we're learning more on the spread and, and the, yeah, the activation of this, of what's happening in our communities. And we're kind of differ on the points that you mentioned. I think it's, you know, the state has kicked it down to the cities to, you know, bring about leadership to our local communities. And I agree with the point that now we, we have to create what, what best works for Mesa. And I think that's, that's, that's something that I think we, you know, we need to discuss and through this forum and through conversations with individuals. I think we, we're all anxious to, you know, go back to, you know, quote, quote-unquote, normalcy, right? Whatever that means right now. You know, go to our favorite restaurant, go to our favorite business. But we gotta, we gotta keep in mind that we're under a public health crisis and... and, and ensuring that, you know, we, we, we try our best to have common sense solutions to, to the issues that we, we have, we were going through. And so this, you know, I, I will add, I'm not sure if any of my colleagues have been touched by the COVID crisis within their family or their friends, but I recently had a really close uncle that was under a ventilator for about a week and a half down in Yuma County. He was in a coma for about a week and he luckily survived. And he was under the COVID-19, you know, treatment. And, and we, we thought he was going to pass away. And he luckily, you know, got back, got back up and, you know, survived. I've had other cousins that also have contracted COVID-19. And some, some of the illnesses were worse than others, some, you know, were mild. And so I think, you know, that, those kind of personal stories that I think a lot of folks are going through right now. We gotta, we gotta also be, be, have, you know, that playing i- in, in our minds to how do we create common sense solutions to, to what we're going through right now? And is, is face coverings the, the end-all be-all? You know, it's not, we've got to do other measures, right? We follow CDC guidelines for a lot of these things. And, and doing these things, hopefully will, will limit the spread and, 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 and what we're going through in our local, local communities right now in Arizona. But, you know, I'll add that, you know, I'm fully in support of having, you know, face coverings in, in, in joining, you know, our, our neighbors, other cities in requiring face coverings for, for the time being. I'm not sure about a timeline yet. You know, I think that's, we should come back and, and, and discuss it further as we move along. But I think it's, it's a common sense solution right now that we, we need to try. You know, the alarming rates that we've had over the last two weeks, you know, tho- those two weeks have almost accounted for what we had in a month, the, the first months that we had, you know, where we, we shut everything down. And so, you know, in, you know, I think testing-wise, you know, having my spouse, you know, being a husband of a person that is working in, in the front lines, you know, of testing for COVID and, and, and providing healthcare. You know, testing is just, you know, at, at that point of time, right? We don't know if an individual will be contracting COVID the next day, right? So test, we, we, we need to make sure that we look at testing. So, you know, this rambling, sorry about that. But I, I, I think, you know, I'm very passionate on, on this because I've seen the effects and the potential, you know, issues that this illness is causing to families in, personally. And we all don't know, there's a lot of unanswered questions based on this. And we're trying to do our best, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments and views on this. But I think this is the, kind of the least that we can do to, you know, help mitigate some, some of the, the spread that we're going through. So, and I agree on the, the enforcement part. We, we should, we should lead with education. We shouldn't be criminalizing this action with anybody in our, in our community. We should be all, you know, be cautious, definitely, you know, have conversations around, you know, why we're doing this and, and why this is important for all of us to participate together, right? And act as a, as a community that is working together, protecting yourself and my, you know, myself to, to, from this, from this health emergency. So I'll leave it there, Mayor.
Thank you Frankie. Thank you, Councilmember Duff.
Sorry about that. Yes, I am in support of this proclamation. Thank you for making it so quickly. We are at a critical time after watching the governor's press release the other day. I was very alarmed at the numbers and it's escalating dramatically every day since. We've already had the ask of people to wear face coverings. And we are, are where we are. We're very close within weeks, days of the hospitals being in emergency protocol. We, and I would hate for us to get to the point that whether you have a COVID, whether you have the virus or any other health emergency or whatever, that the hospitals have, cannot accept you. They are at capacity. We saw this happening in New York. It's possible, we're leading the nation right now in outbreak. We can't allow that to happen. And I would hate to even see our healthcare pulled back so that even the elective surgeries and those who are needing other cancer treatments. And going back to that, I, I think wearing face coverings is a great compromise to a shutdown. If we don't do anything, we're going to be, I'm sure the governor will call for a shutdown again. And that hurts us all in our economy, in our lives. We don't want to go back there. So I think this is a great compromise to use the face coverings. And I know it feels uncomfortable and weird and, and not normal or whatever. I've lived in Japan, I do a lot of business there and everything. And face coverings, masks are part of their daily lives throughout, you know, hundreds of years. They wear that anytime they feel sick or they're vulnerable or for whatever, just to be polite. It's a very much of a norm. I think we can get into a little bit of a norm that it doesn't feel weird, get into that. I'm also concerned about protecting our employee, our service employees especially, those who engage with a lot of different public, day in and day out. They're there, working at wages that are, you know, not that good. And they need to work and we're exposing them and to respect them. I think we need to do our part. We always talk, I hear many people talking about my rights, my rights. And I'm just asking for kindness for another human being to do what you can because face coverings are not 100%. It is a barrier, it is a slowdown, and that's what we need. I also see all our neighboring cities joining together, joining in, doing these proclamations. And I think it's, we need to do our part in also making that proclamation. I know that you are making that proclamation, but do our part in joining them in the effort to slow down the spread of this virus, which is escalating. There are instances, whether indoors or outdoors, that we can keep six foot of distance, even in employment situations where offices or whatever. We have that six feet, I don't think you would have to wear a mask. But if you get out of your chair and you go over to talk to an employee or someone else, or you're having a meeting, then just put that mask on. Show kindness to them and respect for their space and they're doing the same for you, whether indoors or outdoors. Outdoors, I think you, you can maintain six foot of distance unless it's with your family that you live with. Not, we don't need face coverings with our own family in any environment. But, and whether indoors or outdoors, I would say six foot. And churches, we've seen that, the, the virus. I think it was Korea that was spread very quickly in an environment of a church. And it's not about a church, it's just the environment where people are joining together and sharing the airspace. And so I think we need to look at imposing this proclamation to cover them. See what else. I think we need to put signage up, have the, the businesses put signage. You know, I, back to the businesses, I'm talking to a local restaurant. She, she said, I, that she was supportive of face coverings because they have become political and the businesses feel like they're in the middle. They just want to have a good business and protect their employees. But they felt like they're in the middle of having to say to the customer that they prefer to wear a mask or not wear a mask or whatever. They're just like in the middle of all the, the political rhetoric. By making a proclamation more clear, we're accepting that responsibility. If anybody has complaints, they can direct it toward the government. And it doesn't put the, the businesses in this odd space of not knowing really how to join with the public. On the, for the fines or whatever, the citations, of course, education, education, education. If someone is negligent on that, you know, education, then we can go to a warning. And finally, to a citation, looking at what the other cities are doing. Some of them are just merely a fine and some of them are a misdemeanor or a fine that you have the option to do community service. So if, you know, that's, I've seen the fines anywhere from $50 to $250 if there's a fine involved. And then that would be equated to a $10 or $15 an hour of community service. If someone wanted to choose to give that instead of the monetary, which is really hard in this time. But I'll leave that to legal recommendation. And as far as the duration, I, I'd say until we're not in a state of emergency under the governor. If we, if the numbers come down, I'm sure we'll see the governor giving that advice as well. But right now, the governor is giving the advice to wear masks. In fact, he showed up in his press conference with a mask and highly, highly advocated for people to wear masks. So I, I think it's something that we need to do to be responsible. I think that's most of my notes.
Okay, thank you Jen. Jeremy.
So I have a few questions and concerns here and I've gotten a lot of feedback from constituents. So I guess to start, one, one of the things that people have, have asked me is, you know, are we talking about mandating when people just go outside and in their cars? Or are we specifically talking about regulating it to the businesses that they go into? And if I understand what you're suggesting, John, the goal is to regulate once an individual enters an establishment, not necessarily if somebody's walking their dog down the street. Is that correct?
Yes, I, I think the general, again, my, the target for this would be public situations, particularly indoor public situations where social distancing is not a great option. So yeah, walk in your dog, in your car. I, I would not propose regulating in those environments.
Okay, and the other thing that we had discussed was, you know, whether or not we should provide the masks. And so I guess my second concern is two-part. How much money of the COVID funds do we have left, the 90 million from the federal government? And what options do we have to provide businesses with either disposable or face masks so that they're not under financial strain to have? I, I, I mean, I've seen price gouging on these masks ever since COVID came around, right? I think a mask now is just somewhere right under a dollar, 75 cents for disposable masks. So, you know, I wonder if we, if we are going to mandate something like this, if we can't somehow dispense or provide the businesses with disposable masks as people enter the establishment.
That's, that's a great question. I, I think right now the CDC recommendation is for cloth masks. Just thinking that, you know, on a large scale, you know, having disposable medical masks, surgical masks available, you know, for every time you walk into a Walmart or something. I don't think that's the model that is being suggested nationwide, that the model from the CDC is cloth face coverings, including bandanas, scarves, you know, affordable alternatives to, to something, you know, that, that's, that, you know, that, that, that we might, that you might buy from Amazon and, and that matches your outfit, you know, and it looks great and feels great.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, I mean, you know, one of the things, I mean, if we plan on mandating, I, I mean, the whole purpose of the government COVID funds that we got was to give people masks. So I mean, you know, just a quick glance on Amazon, I'm seeing them about, you know, it looks like maybe $4 apiece. And then, you know, the question becomes, can we, can we provide, you know, a voucher or something? Or can we purchase these on a mass scale and somehow disperse them to people who have, you know, customer accounts in our, in our water database, right? Like can we ship people masks or somehow create a stockpile of them that people can come pick up using some type of voucher system?
Again, a great question. I think that there has been a lot of volunteer work done in the city where, you know, wonderful people have sat, you know, sewing for hours and hours and come up with large stacks of, of masks that they then make available to people in the community. So I, I think maybe coordinating some resources for folks who feel like they don't have access to a mask is, is a good idea. Or referring them maybe to some agencies that, that might have some of these cloth masks available. So that, that's a great suggestion.
Or maybe.
I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, maybe we could, I mean, we, you know, we talk about stimulating small businesses. You know, if there's local manufacturers in Mesa that we could partner with to somehow figure out how to stimulate the economy at the same time of providing these masks locally. And I apologize, I think you're going to ask Chris a question.
Well, I, I was just going to ask Chris to respond to the question that you raised about the availability. I, I think clearly using CARES Act money for the purchase of PPE is the definition of something that's, that's appropriate. But I, but Mr. Brady, I know that we've had sometimes challenges that we've had supplied or orders for PPE canceled for public safety. And we're not necessarily out of the woods in, in terms of just securing a, a stockpile or supply for some of our emergency personnel. Or what, what's the status of that?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council. So the mayor's correct, I mean, we're, we're still behind just keeping up with the inventory we need for public safety first. And then as we've tried to acquire additional masks for the other essential employees that work out in the field. We have, Councilor, remember, we've already been doing this with 80% of our workforce already. They've, they've been coming to work every day. And so we have a tremendous amount of need for masks all the time. And we're still struggling with that. I mean, we have a special in with Amazon. We're trying to get as much as we can, but we're still behind for us. And we're trying to build up enough inventory so that at some point in the future, we might be able to open some of our libraries or bring employees back. I just got our first box finally for our office and it's taken months to do that. So, I mean, certainly, I guess it could be eligible. But I guess what I would tell you is if we create expectation, the city's going to provide masks for thousands of businesses times hundreds. There's, we don't have, our procurement logistics is not seeing that kind of activity. Otherwise, we would have a warehouse full of masks and we don't. Whereas every day, they're looking for more masks. We're still behind for the city. I guess that's the end of the, really the conversation is, I think we need to take care of our own first. I guess, once we have an abundance of that, you know, we can find additional ones and procure it for businesses. Again, you know, it's always going to come down, who gets it first and how many? And it's kind of a, it would put us in a very awkward situation. Sometimes these basic care dollars are more of a curse than a blessing, so.
And Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have been very charitable in providing PPE, for example, to assisted living facilities. I'm aware of one situation where.
I think fire's done that. I think the medical, public safety folks have done that. But the ones just, yeah, but the other kind of more regular ones, yeah, they do that where there's a hotspot, right? Where they recognize that need. But just for the general businesses around the city, again, we in the city, for our own employees and the public comes into our space, we are still not there yet.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess if we're not able to procure them, I mean, is there a possibility that we can issue credit or something? You know, and again, I, I only say through like our water bills because that's something that consistently covers the entire city. But we, we can't, is there some kind of like credit that we can send out to people to say, hey, here's a, here's a $10 credit for our mask mandate so that you can afford to purchase some of these things so that burden doesn't fall on you? You know, if you're already out of a job or something, you know, so that people feel like they can adequately protect themselves. You know, if you're already out of a job or something, you know, so that people feel like they can adequately protect themselves, that's what they're gonna do.
I think maybe part of the solution there, I mean, you identify a real problem, I I I I agree. I think part of the solution is us stressing, as some of our other council members have suggested, that this, the the way to comply with this is not to put on an exclusive, the exclusive way, is not to put on an expensive mask. Uh, if you've got an old bandana in the bottom of your sock drawer or a scarf, uh, you're you're in compliance. Uh, and I think uh also, I I do like the idea of talking to some of our human service agencies and saying, hey, I meant, there's a lot of charitable people in town that are manufacturing masks and they're donating them for charitable causes. I think it would, it would be, if we said, hey, Mesa United Way, would you please, you know, be the the repository of donated masks? And if someone in the community uh can call, you know, six four four care and say, I need a mask, we can, you know, say, well, please go to this address and there's a box of free masks there. I mean, I I think that's, we we do need to try to help be a, a resource for that.
Okay, um, well, I'll I'll move on. Uh, my next question uh is for legal. I I had a um, a constituent reach out to me and he said, um, you know, I'm a concealed carry. I have a concealed carry weapon permit and if I wear a mask in public, uh, that that's a felony. And I'm wondering if we can talk about that issue and what, how that'll impact the individuals in our society that have concealed carry permits.
Favorite council member, off that, that's interesting, I'll have to look into it, I don't remember that. I'll I'll have to look at that statute.
Okay.
But I let it out, so I haven't looked at that for a while.
Oh, fair enough, Jim, I um, I probably should have got that to you in advance. Um, the other um issue that I have or a question is the, a a lot of people have, I I'm sure everyone's seen their inbox fill up with people who are saying that it's unconstitutional for us to force them to wear masks. And Jim, I was just wondering if you could touch base on that as well, just in general. Um, I I assume that we have the authority to do that, but I, you know, I just wanted to hear what your opinion was on that for the people that have expressed that concern.
Yeah, you know, it's an interesting, it's um, and and as you've seen, uh, obviously, more than, I think it's now like a dozen cities have taken the position that they do have the authority to require masks in this situation, especially um given the the nature of both the national state and a local emergency has been declared. Something that I don't think has happened, I I can't remember the exact timing, I think it's been a hundred years or some, it's an incredible number of years that that this has happened. Um, and I'll tie it in this answer also to another question the mayor has asked. Uh, almost all, if not all, I uh read these last night, so I, you know, may have missed when it's, when I say this, have exclusion for religious organizations uh or for religious activities. And so um, it's so, so uh First Amendment type of exclusion so that, so that they don't uh abut um a- against the First Amendment rights. And so you'll, you'll see those type of exclusions um in most, if not all, um of the uh proclamations or orders that went out just to the last day.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like you have a concern as long as there's certain stipulations built in?
That that's a fair way to say it.
Okay, um, and the next topic I want to touch on um are the fines or or what the punishment is for this. And, you know, uh, I'm not sure where I, where I fall in this issue, but uh, one of the things I could say is that if, if, if it's not enforceable, um, then the whole thing seems kind of pointless anyways to to implement, if we're not gonna do anything, if people are um, are are just ignoring it, right? So that that's one of my concerns. Um, the other issue I have is um the ICU usage capacity. Um, do do we have a team within the city that's uh tracking things like uh I uh ICU and like, hey, you know, or do we have a partnership, I'm assuming, with some of these bigger hospitals like Banner where they're saying, um, look, you need to do something about this, based on the trajectory, we're gonna hit, you know, a a path that we don't have anymore, these ventilators left? And is anybody internally able to comment on that?
So uh, Mayor Councilman Whitaker, what you, you can see every day, you get a email from James Johnson, who does, who's part, heads up our um EOC. And in that, they will give you a report of the South um East Valley's um status on hotels, sorry, hospitals, sorry, hospitals and ICUs. So they get a report, they ought to call uh at the county level that gets that information. Uh, so there are, you know, I'm trying to find the last one. Um, they're still saying there's capacity in hospitals in um the Southeast area. They did point out, I think that there are some, um, you know, like you said, ICU and some of those others are at a highest rates. Um, but um, so that's where we get our information, there's just a coordination and a report that goes out. And then that helps inform the medical units as far as if there's hospitals they can't take patients to. But right now, um, I'm reading all hospitals in Southeast Sector are o- open, apart from a hospital at Banner Casa Grande Medical Center. So.
Okay.
Chandler Regional, so they do keep track of that.
Okay, and then I know that we had discussed probably a month ago, like, you know, this phased reopening of our city services, the the rec centers, the pools. I mean, given that we've now identified that we believe it's worse than it was a few months ago, are we rolling that back? Are are we gonna start closing our rec centers and start closing our pool, pools?
Well, Mayor Council, we're actually getting ready to open up our rec centers. Um, so that's, that's been a big question that's come up. So at this point, we're continuing to provide, keep the pools open and uh, and we're still planning opening the rec centers to not just to jump public, but to uh classes. Um, we do have, we have gym, we have a gym at the Red Mountain Center, Red Mountain Generation Center. That has sometimes created some challenges for us. We're having to do reservations for individuals who want to use it. Um, and there's been a debate about uh wearing masks from the time or face coverings from the time they walk in through the facility and go up to that area and whether they, like the mayor said, whether they have to wear it when they're working out. So, I mean, Mayor Council, so you know, the city of Mesa has already taken a strong policy and it's been in place for some time, that any city employee who engages with the public, including public safety, already are required to wear a face covering. That's already in place and has been for more than a month. Um, right now, we just don't have a lot of public engagement, so we don't have a lot of employees who are interacting. But those that do are required to wear a face mask. So that's already been covered. Um, and we require, if public does come into a public facility today, they're required to wear a mask.
Jeremy, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a crack at that as well, because I think really it's it's a question for this council. Uh, I mean, when, uh, as I indicated earlier, in my e- estimation, the the threat of contracting the virus today is many times greater than it was a couple of months ago when the community went into pretty much quarantine. And so I I I think if if uh there's ways, I mean, the, this proposed regulation on masks is one of the ways that we're looking at as an alternative to quarantine. Uh, if if we don't do this, uh, I think the, as I think it was Councilmember Duff indicated, the alternative to doing a mask requirement is quarantine. Um, so I would love to find a way to do this smarter uh and and to try to not uh be crippling for the economy. I don't want to shut down bars and restaurants, I want bars and restaurants to be uh open and thriving, but I want their their patrons to be wearing masks so that we can, you know, mitigate the spread of the virus. But to can, continue to do, to continue to allow the the economy to function, uh, but try to find smart ways to keep a lid on the virus. So I I think if we don't do this, the alternative is uh headed back towards quarantine.
Um, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Could we uh maybe circle back to maybe what bullet points you have gotten uh so far from our discussion? And maybe uh kind of recap some things, would that be okay?
Yes, uh, Mr. Whitaker, were you th- through with your questions?
No, actually, I just had one, one more um item, you know, I I, one of the things that I've seen implemented um in other countries is, you know, I think they use this um uh touchless thermometer that you can point at somebody's forehead and read their temperature. Um, and when we go back to our, uh, I'll I'll circle back to our COVID funds and then talk about, you know, giving masks to people. You know, I don't know that it wouldn't be a good use of our COVID dollars as well to somehow provide registered businesses in Mesa with um one of these thermometers, you know, so that if uh, if we are truly concerned about stopping the spread of this, you know, one of the major things is that that's indicative of somebody's infected is that uh they have a temperature, right? So um, if we were to use those funds to disperse those across businesses, then those businesses could then um choose to let people in or out based on um if they have temperature. So that was my, um, I believe that was the last, the last of my notes. But um, I I think that would be a, you know, a good use of our COVID funds as well as the masks.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a, that's a good question as well. I've also heard recently of, you know, the the non-symptomatic carriers that uh people are concerned about, that they can walk, you know, pass a uh a thermometer test, but nonetheless, they add, they're they're spreading the virus. So uh, that's a good question for a medical expert as to how effective that would be. Uh, okay, in response to Mr., I have been making notes and I suspect Mr. Smith has been as well. And so I've been trying to uh to 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 make sure that I'm getting your feedback and I appreciate it. With regard to Mr. Freeman, um, I I think uh he he's a great example in my mind of somebody that during their workday would not be subject to this uh, to this ordinance, or to this proclamation. Uh, if you're uh working outside where it's in a hot environment, but you're able to social distance, no one is, wants a farmer to, but we are in a mask in a hundred and six degrees uh of temperature. So I think you're good, Mark. Uh, and I also noted that the, that you uh are not in favor of using the police uh to enforce this. Uh, those, those were my notes. Uh, with regard to Mr. Thompson, I I know Mr. Thompson was was chafing at the idea of the government regulating business. Um, my only thought during that, Kevin, was uh in the governor's press conference on Wednesday, he did announce a mandate on all businesses in Arizona, that every business in Arizona has to have a policy, develop a policy with regard to masks. Now, he he came short of mandating that they require masks, but he does require that every business in the state of Arizona has a policy on social distancing and masking. Uh, so this is a step beyond what the governor suggested, but uh he has uh put that burden on every business in the, in the state as of Wednesday.
And I would agree with with uh the governor's ruling on that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Uh, Mr. Luna uh correctly uh pointed out that we need to use the right vocabulary and face covering is is what this needs to be, not a mask policy. And and as we indicated earlier, there's gotta be uh, you know, a lot of flexibility with regard to what a a face covering is. Uh, we also, and I I neglected to talk about the age uh of when this would start. And it seems like in our neighboring communities, that the, that some are less and some, none are more, but it seems like the consensus is that that was, this starts with six years old. Uh, although there are some communities that have suggested less than that. But uh, I think Jen was suggesting six years old and that's what I would uh endorse as well. Um, with regard to uh, again, Mr. Luna's comments, uh, an emphasis on education and uh letting our, the public health authorities decide when this would uh would sunset, as opposed to to us doing it without uh being encouraged to do so by the public health authorities. Um, Frankie uh echoed a lot of what Mr. Luna said, uh, as did Jen. Um, she did uh indicate, and if you don't mind, Mr. Smith, let's circle back to this because Jen raised the issue of churches and so did I. Uh, I think, you know, a church environment, I I miss going to church, but I, on the other hand, I, I'm glad I'm not going to church right now because that seems like the, the classic environment where the disease is gonna spread. Uh, as you indicated earlier, most of the proclamations we've seen exclude uh houses of worship and religious organizations. Is that uh, uh, and can we regulate churches, Mr. Smith?
Uh, Mayor Council, so as you know, in several of the governor's order, he specifically identified religious activities as an essential activity and they're not to be interfered with. And then in the most recent order, he's provided a, a one paragraph that allows for municipalities to um provide for face coverings. How you integrate those two, that paragraph with the other paragraphs that talk about uh the essential nature of religious activities. Um, I I don't know how the governor is going to to read those. Uh, and I did say that, and I, I don't know if it's many, most or all the cities um have excluded religious organizations. I know none of them, I I read these last night, we obviously got a flurry of these last night. None of them specifically apply theirs to a religious organization. So I know that, and and the difference being is, is as you read these through, sometimes it's not clear that they would apply in the first case, so you wouldn't need an exemption, right? As you read through some of these. And so that's why I'm not, you know, I'd have to spend more time with them and analyzing to see if the ones that didn't explicitly provide an exemption, you could, it's because they're gonna interpret it in a way in which they don't need an exemption. So I I would just say we would be um an outlier of um of a few or maybe our, by ourselves if um if we did not provide an exemption, if we have provisions on what otherwise um would apply to religious organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would, I would recommend you have an exemption.
Okay, sounds like, again, we would be the only ones if we did tackle that. And and uh the the question of uh people challenging the constitutionality of this, you know, that might open the door that we're somehow interfering with their First Amendment exercise of religion uh constitutional rights. So, so that's, that's an interesting uh situation. Uh, Jen also uh suggested, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, that rather than that uh, you'd prefer to have a civil penalty than a criminal penalty associated with this. Uh, did I, is that fair? Yeah, and I I wrote that down because I I, that that appeals to me as well. I think currently we were thinking of that this would be a class one misdemeanor, which is, you know, a low level uh misdemeanor, but still, maybe we want to move it over to the to civil penalties as opposed to the potential for uh, you know, a low level misdemeanor. Uh, and Jen also indicated that she would uh encourage us to keep the order in place until the state of emergency was lifted and the governor and 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 state health authorities uh gave the green light. Uh, Jeremy, uh, we all saw, you know, that the idea of of uh being a resource for masks for people, I think, is a good one that I'd I'd like to explore. Uh, the concealed carry question is one that Mr. Smith, I think, is gonna look into. Uh, Jeremy echoed the need for some consequences and I I think we all understand that unless there's, that this has gotta be uh, there's gotta be consequences or it'll be ignored. Um, so the, and I I apologize if I missed some of the high points from your recommendations. And now would be a great time if I, if I did, or if you've thought of something else, to please share it with us. Uh, Mr. Luna.
Uh, Mayor, I spoke into both superintendents uh and they're asking for guidance from both, from our city in terms of how they implement policy in their school districts. Um, I spoke with Andy this morning and Dr. Forless relative to uh working in a classroom. Uh, she's indicated that face covering is certainly a good thing that she's going to be advocating. Uh, there's been some entrepreneurs that have made these shields. Uh, certainly, we want to protect our teachers as well as our students. Uh, it's, it's gonna be a challenge, can you imagine with all the small kids having to wear masks? Uh, so that's something that they're gonna have to grapple, grapple with. But the, but they're, they're, they're asking that we provide the guidance and, and that's what we're doing right now. So I just want to let you know on that.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I I spoke with uh Dr. Forless uh yesterday as well and uh and received the same message. She, uh, I I think we do want to defer to the school districts for the implementation of this policy. Because like I say, I, I wouldn't begin to know how to tell a a third grade teacher, you know, uh, how to make this work. Uh, but I I think at the same time, the school districts would like uh us to be the bad guy to some extent and to say, yes, you need to do this, uh, and and we're giving you the flexibility to figure out how to do it. Uh, and so uh, I I'm open to that. I think I, in the proclamation, you know, could say that that uh we defer to school districts to 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 implement a a policy, uh, but that we do let the, let them know that we support them in in their decision to have a policy. So you're, we're gonna need to wordsmith that a little bit, I think. Thank you. I I also had a great conversation yesterday with the principal of Eastmark High School. And uh, that district is, uh, Queen Creek goes back to school July the twenty-second. And I I was saying to him, oh my gosh, how are you gonna do that, you know, uh, in this environment? So I, and he did, he didn't know. So I mean, this is, uh, that that's part of the sense of urgency that I feel here is that the Mesa Public Schools is supposed to go back to school in less than fifty days. And in this context, uh, you know, we we have to do what we can to try to to lower the curve here uh, or our kids aren't going back to school. Uh, and and that would, the impact on that will have on our families and on our community, you know, will be uh significant. So I I do feel a sense of urgency, uh, not just because of these spiking numbers, but because of some of the that are on the horizon for us and for our community that we, that that we really need to to get the numbers down. that we, that we really need to get the numbers down. The other, last thing I wanted to say is I agree with, I think it was Jen that said that this is going to be really difficult. I mean, I wore a mask at the gym this morning. First time I'd ever done anything like that and I hated it. And I can tell that, you know, this is going to be inconvenient and it's going to be something that people aren't going to like. And if you're in your city council because you thought it would be a good way to make friends, that was a bad idea. This is going to be a pain in the rear for our community and I don't want to do it. I don't want to wear a mask, but I'm going to. And I think that it's important, given the very dire situation that we find ourselves in, that we exercise leadership and do this. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I just want to circle back again to Jen and yourself, your statement regarding fines to businesses. So are you suggesting that a business could get a citation and end up in court?
Yes, I think that's the only way to make it, to give them any motivation to become into compliance. Now, the question is, would it be a civil, you know, penalty? Like a zoning violation or a sign code violation or something like that? Or would it be potentially a criminal penalty, you know, a class one misdemeanor? And it was Jen's suggestion that we, that we make it a civil fine as opposed to something in the criminal court.
Yeah, I think there should be, I think some of the other templates in other cities, there was some education component in there that the judge had the leniency to do that. I'm just not in favor of finding businesses. I mean, who's going to do that? Is our police department going to walk in? Is code compliance going to walk in? I guess figuring out who's going to be the authority in this. Do we have an answer to that, Mr. Smith?
So Mayor and Vice Mayor, and let me just tell you, in the past, on the past orders and the executive orders from the governor in the past, it's a class one misdemeanor and the police were able to issue citations. And consistent with those executive orders and prior proclamations, we first warned, we educated before citing. You had to earn your citation if you got one. And then I talked with the city prosecutor about doing deferrals and providing education so that the goal was not to, was not to obtain any convictions or even to get fines. It was really to facilitate the education of protecting the citizens of our community. And so that was the aim at all times. And so that was, that's been the process from all the other prior orders and proclamations. And in fact, we actually get more complaints about, you know, people that we're giving too many warnings or education and not going to citation fast enough. That's actually, I hear that more.
Okay.
Just counsel, Vice Mayor, also, before, we hope it never even gets to the courts, right? That's the, that's the goal here. We shouldn't even have a prosecutor that even has this in front of them. So as I've talked to the police chief, this will be the lowest level, level four call that they will handle. It will not be a priority. So it's only, are they going to respond most of the time unless they have available staff to do it? Most of the time when they've done, we've had to do the curfew or the stay at home order, they've gotten complaints. A lot of times, working with the business, they're able to handle it by the sergeant, just calling on the phone, working with the business owner, making them aware of the proclamation, letting them know what the rules were, and that usually solved the issue. I mean, the challenge is though, we know that's such a divisive issue that police officers are not going to have a chance. If we get the number of complaints I suspect we're going to get, they're not going to make it to every call. So most of this is going to be done over the phone. It's going to be a low priority. So by the time we get out there, it's probably going to be 30 minutes or more before we're able to respond. So this is really going to have to focus on the social media education, the education that even if a police officer arrives on the scene, it's going to be, it's not going to be in the act most likely. It's just going to be, hey, we have this rule, we have this proclamation, here's what you're supposed to do. So unless there's someone who's just mulliganed and, you know, really kind of goes beyond this proclamation and kind of gets, becomes more of a, you know, disturbance and a trespass issue, that's probably when you'll see the police officer handle it differently. But we have not had that problem today.
Okay, still, I'm not in favor of having a fine. I just want it for the record. I don't think we should be doing any enforcement. I think if we, if a police officer has to respond, I like the idea that a phone call is made, the business owner is notified, steps to mitigate it or given to him. Hopefully correction is being done properly. But I just, I just don't think, I, it doesn't look good in the headlines. I mean, yes, people who frequent or are in these type of situations, if they're not social distancing, it's up to the business owner and personal accountability for this. The other thing I just want to touch on is people with disabilities. You know, we're a state, a city that's certified in autism. And I want to make sure that people, bullet points, people with disabilities are included in the exemption. And I believe there's quite a few exemptions from what I saw in a lot of patients in the cities. So Mayor, have you gotten that point in your bullet point?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Freeman. And I thought I mentioned that in my initial statement, but if I did, absolutely. I would absolutely, the autistic example is one that I've heard as well and one that really resonates with me. So not just physical disabilities, mental disabilities. I think there are some people that are frightened or they're claustrophobic or for whatever reason, if they, if this terrifies them and, you know, then I, I think we need to be sensitive to that. And then developmental disabilities such as autism. I totally understand that the angst that some parents are feeling at the idea of trying to put a mask on their autistic children. You know, so absolutely, those would be, would absolutely be exclusions.
I remember you saying that, but I, when you went through, you went through it kind of quick. So I just wanted to cover that. And so, thank you, I'll end with that.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Freeman. I mean, this, this just reeks of McCarthyism, you know, of the days when people were telling on people and people were telling on businesses. People were getting in trouble, you know. It just, it just stinks all the way around. I don't think this is good for our community. We got to remember why we are in the positions we are in. You know, we were elected to represent the people of our districts. And my constituents, and I can't speak for your constituents, but I've, I've gotten emails, I've gotten calls, I've gotten messages on Facebook. Overwhelmingly, my constituents have told me they do not support a mandate on, on wearing masks or face coverings or whatever you want to call them. And I just, I struggle with that. I just think it's not our position to mandate to our citizens that, you know, Jen tried to, Jen said earlier, she was like, you know, there's a, you know, you can ask someone to be kind or, you know, and hope that they put on their face mask. And I think there's a big difference between asking someone to be kind and mandating that they be kind. And I just don't think it's our place to be mandating that people have to wear a face mask, nor should businesses be required. I, again, I think the governor did a great job of saying, hey, you need to come up with a plan as a business on how you're going to keep social distancing in place and how you're going to protect those people that visit, the patrons that visit your, your business. But it shouldn't be government telling them that they have to wear, that they have to require their patrons to wear masks or we're going to penalize them for that. I just, I just think it's wrong.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other input you'd like to share? Councilmember Duff?
Yes, I just wanted to share for the general public that there are a lot of questions and a lot of gaps that we're not speaking of today and that we have read the proclamations, declarations of six or seven cities. And there's a common language that goes through all of them, a common, you know, order of what's accepted, what's not, and the exceptions. And it goes through that and we will be adopting pretty much the same thing. So even though we're not answering every situation in these declarations, proclamations, there is common sense. And for, like we just mentioned, for people who have autism or a medical condition, this is just one, I don't know what city it is, but it's very common. Most, all of them have this, all of them do have it. For any person who cannot wear a face covering because of a medical condition, mental health condition or developmental disability or is unable to remove the face covering without assistance. A person who cannot wear a face covering because of a medical condition is not required to produce medical documentation of the condition, provided that the employer may require such proclamation from an employee in accordance. Anyway, there are a lot of things that are making provisions for those situations and those people that cannot wear the face coverings. And even in gyms, I really like to see if we can maintain, if people can maintain six feet of distance from the other when they're exercising, I personally think that we don't need to wear a face covering. It is difficult to exercise with a face covering. So if you can maintain that six foot, just like the bars and restaurants have to do to maintain that six foot, I think it'd be responsible for gyms and allow people to exercise without that restriction. You know, our restaurants already give us some guidance when we dine, you know. It's not uncommon, you see, no shirts, no shoes, no service and no mask or no face coverings is just one more addition of that. And so I don't think it's that far off. It's just one additional thing that we're doing as a temporary measure so that we're not into a quarantine, a shutdown, which is detrimental. And our asking, our expecting hasn't been working well. It's, we have escalating figures and until those figures come down, we can't just keep, keep on the way we've been going. They're dramatic day by day. So I am in agreement to move forward with the face coverings along with all of our surrounding cities that are doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And the exercise exclusion is one that I've struggled with as well. I think you're right, we would stand out among all of the other cities. If we, right now in all the other cities, the face masks are required in gyms, period. And like I said, the things I've read the last few days have led me to believe that that's just not a good idea, that we can do better than that. That there is a way to provide safeguards, but still allow people, I think this important mental health outlet of finding a way to exercise. Mr. Thompson, did I see your finger?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the no shoes, no shirt, no service, that's not a federal law, it's not a mandate. It's a business basically saying that they don't want to serve you if you're not coming in with shoes or shirt. It's not a federal law.
All right, Counsel, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Frankie?
Hey, Mayor, maybe Jim, is the, is the order from the governor that he mentioned, if there's no, for businesses, if there's no social distancing happening, I believe it said face masks should be required or should be used. Am I right on that or?
Mayor, Councilmember, I'd have to look at, he also produced some guidelines subsequent to the order and I'd have to look at them. I don't think in any of them they mandate face masks. In multiple places, though, the governor has encouraged and recommended face masks.
Yeah, which just leads, yeah, it just leads me to my, my point that I made in my, you know, first statement is that, you know, you could get down to us to provide leadership on this issue. I think it's, it's again, a common sense approach that I think we're, we're under different times right now under this health crisis. So we gotta, we gotta think about common sense solutions to this issue.
Hey, thank you, Frankie. Counsel, anything else before we conclude this meeting? All right, well, thank you. This has been very useful. It remains my intention to issue a proclamation, but I will, Mr. Smith and I will meet after this meeting and we will do our best to incorporate the suggestions that have been made by the council. I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman, do you have a question?
I just want to thank you, Mayor, for soliciting our input. I think it's, you know, representation in our respective districts. I mean, thank you, that's all I want to say.
Thank, no, well, thank you for providing the feedback. This will be a better document than it would have been if I had acted without your input. So thank you very much. And again, this is a soul brain event, you know. None of, I don't relish the idea of mandate, of putting additional mandates on our citizens, but we are in a very extraordinary situation. You know, the statistics that I rehearsed for you at the beginning of this meeting are, can't be ignored. We're trending straight up and without, you know, the status quo is not working. So thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Well, Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to second what Mr. Freeman said. Thank you for soliciting our input. Because I think it's important that, that you hear from the constituents from across the city. So thank you for allowing us to come in and provide our opinion and provide our input.
Of course, thank you very much. We're a team. All right, I'm sorry, I think Mr. Luna moved to adjourn this meeting. Counsel, please unmute your microphones and we'll do this with oral consent. All in favor, please say, I have adjourned this meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.